Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to December 1st council meeting. If you have a cellphone, please turn it off. Our procedure will be a little different tonight because of SINDIE. That's when our, after our election in November, the new council people and the mayor take their seats. Well, we didn't have any change, but we still go through the procedure. SINDIE is Latin for indefinitely, and so we will start this one out. As the SINDIE procedure, we'll call this meeting to order. We'll start with a moment of silence to be observed, please. Thank you. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Wheaton.
Here.
Kraus.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Domingo.
Here. Thank you. Council comments? Yes.
I just wanted to take an opportunity to introduce the latest addition to our team, Ms. Lauren Elster, who's here tonight. She's going to be working on some of the city projects and cases that we have pending right now, so you may be seeing more of her. So I just wanted the council to have an opportunity to meet her tonight.
Yes.
I would like to thank all the people who supported me in the reelection. There are too many to name. This is the first time that I've taken the opportunity to thank Precinct One for re-electing me. I'm truly proud to have gone through a reelection where you have shown that you have the confidence in me to put me back in this seat another four years. Thank you.
I just wanted to let people know, I was very pleased on Saturday to drive through downtown. Next to Derek Hatfield's watch store is a brand-new toy store called The Toy Barn, and was able to go in and buy some stuff for some young folks that I know. It's a great little store. It's got a lot of educational-based toys, and so a free plug for them. I think it's a great addition to our downtown.
Thank you. There's no further. Approval of regular session minutes for November 17th, 2014, and approval for special council session minutes for November 17th, 2004.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and support. Are there any questions on either one? See none? Voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Okay. We'll have the adjournment of the SINDIE, which is the reorganization of the council. If I can have Andy, Lynn, and Marie step forward up front, and myself, and Jill will swear us in. Instead of doing it separate, we'll do it all at once. When she says aye, say your name.
We'll face that way. I was gonna say.
Of your things?
Aye.
Joe?
Moree Barnes.
You swear.
You swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And that I will.
And that I will.
The best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
Faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
City of Albion.
Of the City of Albion.
Councilmember.
Councilmember.
Precinct Number One. So help me God. Your new council?
Our direction is quite well done.
Same council?
Okay. Thank you.
Make sure you're right.
I was gonna say.
Thank you. Call to order with our new council. Roll call again, please.
Councilmember Kraus.
Yes.
Here.
Here.
Barnes.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Wheaton.
Here.
And Mayor Domingo.
Here. Thank you. Nominations for Mayor Pro Tem. Lynn?
I would like to nominate Garrett again. I think he did good last year. I'd like to see him finish up what he started, and so I would nominate him again.
Support. Should I have a, do we do discussions on those?
Why ask him? There's no discussion. We'll have the roll call vote.
Councilmember French.
No.
Barnes.
No.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Wheaton.
No.
Kraus.
No.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes. Okay. Yes. Cheryl?
I would like to put the name of Andrew French in nomination for Mayor Pro Tem.
Support that.
Okay. Any questions? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
No.
Brown.
No.
Wheaton.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yep. Okay. Andy. You are the new Mayor Pro Tem.
Congratulations, Andy.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I say? I just wanted to be made clear that when I said no, it's because I had supported Mr. Brown in the first place. It's not that I dislike Andy, or that I think Andy can't do the job. It's that, once I have decided to support one person, it's who I support.
I agree with that.
Just wanted to.
I agree with that. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor, councilmember comments?
Is there not an oath of office?
See none? Presentations, big read by program. Jessica Roberts?
Thank you.
So thank you so much for allowing us to come and see you tonight. I'm Jess Roberts, and I'm here.
Can you pull the mic back to you, please? Thank you very much.
I don't usually need a mic, but here we go. I am here tonight as equal parts Albion College faculty member and Albion community member, and I would just like to introduce my students. Madeline Drury, Diana Gomez, Tess Hadzma. Madeline, Tess, and Diana and I have been working in the past several months with the committee of local community members in order to bring a program called the Big Read to Albion. The Big Read is a program run by the National Endowment for the Arts, and Madeline will go on to describe it more fully. The committee is full of members, many of whom you already know, Harry Bonner, Jerry Lynn Williams Harper, Diane Ginnan-Lilly, Maola Dunklin, Mary Slater, Kimberly Arns, and Tori Wilson, among others. And we have been working together to try to create a program that will bring our community together around a shared experience of reading. So I'm gonna turn it over to my students. These are students who are working with me in an English 314 class to construct the programming, and then also to compose the grant that we will be submitting to the NEA by the end of January. Okay, so the thing I'm going to do is I'm going to explain the goals of the Big Big Read, and then I'll explain our goals as Albion's Big Read. So the Big Read, in general, works to revitalize the role of reading as an exciting and pleasurable activity, rather than just something that you have to do for homework at school. It's something that can be exciting and fun, and especially in young people as well as adults. It's also, one of their goals is to expose readers to different kinds of voices and stories, as well as provide communities the opportunity to come together and engage over a shared reading experience. So for Albion's Big Read, we have taken a lens of empowering youth. So as Tessa and Diana will explain later, there's a reoccurring theme of young people that you'll see in our programming. We also want to provide a space, and as well as programming, that allows for different and diverse groups to come together and meaningfully interact. So an example of these different and diverse groups can be the college and the community, for example. So we're taking steps to make that happen. So the book we are collaborating around is called A Wizard of Earthsea, and I will turn it over to Diana.
So the book that we have based all our programming around is Ursula Le Guin's A Wizard of Earthsea. Ursula Le Guin is an award-winning American author, who has authored over 21 novels, along with countless other works of prose and poetry. Earlier this year, she was awarded the National Book Foundation's Medal for Distinguished Contribution to American Letters. Arguably, most, Le Guin's most famous work, A Wizard of Earthsea, is a young adult novel about a young man named Ged, who's a talented wizard. Recognizes a prodigy, gets sent to a wizarding school to hone his talents. Along the way, he realizes that wielding magic is more dangerous than it seems. One of the first fantasy novels featuring a protagonist of color, A Wizard of Earthsea explores and emphasizes themes such as power, self-control, and identity.
So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna explain to you guys a little bit about the programming. There, on the white sheet that was passed around, I believe, you can kinda take a peek at that. But what that does is our programming is broken down into three events, or five different categories. But before we get there, Maddie mentioned that one of the goals of our Big Read, specific to Albion, is to empower the youth. So one way that we're gonna do that is we are actually going to have 18 local Albion youth, current seventh, current seventh, eighth, and ninth graders, and what they are gonna do is they are gonna actually lead some of the community book discussions as a way to feel empowered and be recognized by not only other youth, but by adults and community leaders as well. So what we're gonna do is, starting in March, we are going to have the youth that are selected to be the youth leaders, we're going to have them meet with a college student and a community leader, and they're gonna start reading A Wizard of Earthsea. And what they're gonna do then is they're gonna meet about once every few weeks, make sure they're making progress, talk about the books, go through the experience of reading it. Then, in August of 2015, they are going to attend a one-week workshop hosted by Albion College. And what that, what's gonna happen at that workshop is that they are going to learn how to lead the group discussions. So they will learn how to tackle tough topics that might come up, how to command a room, how to make sure people feel safe enough to speak, things like that. So not only will they be able to lead these book discussions, but those are also skills that will help them long-term. So then, we come to October of 2015, and that's when the four weeks of our Big Read programming will take place. And as you can see, we have those programs divided up into five categories, like I talked about. We have book events, which are events that are directly related to the book. We have community connections, which are really cool. They're actually discussions about themes or topics raised in the book, and we kind of relate them to, specific to Albion. So an example of some of those we have going on is we have faith and fantasy. Fantasy is a global phenomenon, living in a world of water, violence and masculinity, and people of color in children's and young adult literature. And one thing that's really cool about these community connection events in particular is that they were born out of conversations and collaborations with the community leaders and people we've been talking to in the process of planning this. Beyond that, we have recreation events, which are overtly playful events. Those will engage youth in particular, but they'll also be open to people of all ages. We'll have cultural events, which will feature a film series, an art exhibition of cover art of books. And then finally, we will have our keynote speaker, which is a final celebration that will kind of celebrate the youth who led the event, and it will also just celebrate everything that we've done and hopefully keep us moving forward with momentum for all the things that we were able to accomplish. So I'm gonna turn it over to Jess, and she is gonna wrap us up. From the very beginning, this entire endeavor has been collaborative. It's a collaboration between the college and the district library and the public schools. It's a collaboration between a number of local organizations. We are interested in sharing the progress that we've made with you, and sharing the information that we have, and also gathering any information, any feedback that you would feel comfortable sharing with us. You can do that either by asking us questions now, or by contacting us by way of the albionsbigread@gmail.com email address that is listed on one of the sheets. If you feel excited about any of the things that you've heard tonight, we hope that you will spread the word. We hope that you will come and be a part of the programming when it takes off. We think it's a really exciting opportunity for us to come together as a community and to look toward the future. So thank you so much for having listened to our presentation, and please feel free to ask us any questions.
Yes.
I have a question. How will the 18 youth be selected?
We are working with Mrs. Williams Harper, and also other leaders in, at the school, and with organizations that are affiliated with the school in various ways to identify those 18 students.
Okay. But every seventh, eighth, and ninth grader is going to read this book, as well as anybody else who would be interested?
Anybody who is interested in reading this book will absolutely read this book. It's not clear that that book will necessarily be on the curriculum for the eighth, ninth, and 10th graders next year. But there will certainly be considerable energy, and we will attempt to engage them and pull them in over the summer, and then also into the fall months.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
So copies of this book are going to be available everywhere?
In fact, yes. You will see many a copy of A Wizard of Earthsea. So one of the things that the NEA does is that it allows us to apply for monies to support the programming that we'll put together. And so we have built into our budget money to cover all of the costs of the book so that we can give copies of A Wizard of Earthsea to anybody who wants them.
Thank you. About the book, is it, is it a trilogy as well?
It's actually longer than a trilogy. It was originally a trilogy, and then she added later.
Because when I was in the ninth grade, I read the trilogy. And so I'm really excited, because when I was in ninth grade, I was a bit wigged out by it, actually. So I'm looking forward to actually getting back and rereading it now in the post-Harry Potter, Hunger Games generation. So thank you very much for, all of you, for doing this. Very well done.
If I could ask one quick question. Jess, could you repeat? You had mentioned that there was a role for adult volunteers to participate, as well as students and teachers, if they're interested. What would be the contact information, again?
So the best way to be in touch with us about any volunteer opportunity is either by way of the albionsbigread@gmail.com, which is listed on the sheet that has a map on it, or to contact me directly. My name is Jess Roberts, and my email address is jroberts@albion.edu. And you can feel free to spread that email address around.
Thank you. I do have one more. Is this similar to what they did in Jackson quite a few years ago?
It is, yes.
Kill the Mockingbird?
Yes. It's exactly the same program.
That's what I thought. That was fabulous. Okay. Thank you.
So this is a book that was importantly selected from the NEA's Big Read list. To Kill the Mockingbird is also on that particular list. And the planning committee convened earlier in June of 2014 and selected this book from among the 37 titles that were on the NEA's list.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Citizens' comments. Person addressing the city council shall limit their comments to agenda items only, and to no more than five minutes. Proper protocol and decorum is required. Are there any citizens' comments on the agenda this evening? See none. Moving on. Boards and commission appointments and reappointments. Betty Branch, Board of Review. Alternate, be appointed to term to expire 12/31 of 18?
So moved.
Support? Moved and supported. Betty, are you in the audience?
Yes.
Oh, you were standing. I'm sorry. Welcome, 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 Betty. We appreciate your attendance here tonight, and we appreciate your help on this board. And I know you're on one other one, or two other ones? One other one? And that will be coming up. So thank you very much, Betty. All in favor, or say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Welcome, Betty, again. Discussion and approval to request a collaborative meeting with officials from the Albion School District, Albion College, and the City of Albion.
Cool. Do we need to support it, or do we just talk about it?
I'll make the motion to approve it, if I can get a second. Then we can discuss it.
Sure. I'll give you that second.
Okay.
Goal of this meeting would be informational?
I think we need to have an agenda, because I think that we've tried to reach out, so I think it's important to have actual.
Cheryl will come up with probably the better idea of getting together, if you want to explain what you explained to me.
As you had mentioned, if we weren't going to have a specific agenda, to more have it as a meet and greet, to just talk in general, and just become familiar with each other, and from that discussion, informal discussion in which public can be invited, they can also approach each of the members of all of the boards and highlight whatever issues there may be out there. Then if there's a need for future meetings, it'll be more specific.
I think that's an excellent idea.
I did as well. I thought it was less informal that way.
Right, yeah.
You can pick out who you want to talk to, or whatever, versus everybody sitting down to a table and, you know, doing it that way.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm in favor that city manager and I did have a chance to talk about that. However, I would like the citizens to recognize, if we're gonna progress into the future, we're gonna have to have a master plan that's encompassing. I'm on a planning commission, and schools, Albion College, are poignant questions toward building that master plan. We're still working on that master plan right now. We've just reconvened the planning commission, and it's incomplete. We were working on it. However, those items need to be addressed. So I'm asking for some type of commitment after these get-togethers that we do come back to this item. Because if we're gonna move in the future, we have to include these two in our thinking to build a master plan, because that's part of a community, the schools and the college.
Go ahead, Amy.
Yeah, thanks. I think that as we, as a community, and as the leaders of the community, come forward with a master plan, that, I agree with you, Councilman Barnes, that the college and the public schools obviously have to be involved, but we also have to include our business leaders and any citizen that wants to have input. I think that this is, this has a potential to be, you know, creating the healthy dialogue that every healthy community does have, where members of the community come to a city council meeting and voice their concerns, and we get a chance to talk about bigger issues rather than so-and-so's plumbing problem, or so-and-so's water problem, or so-and-so's electrical problem, or so-and-so's street or road problem. But that we can have an opportunity to talk about larger issues. So I think that this is a first step, and I would agree with Councilman Barnes that it's the first step. And there should be, over time, many such steps. And the council already has structures in place to do that. We have the EDC come in quarterly to talk about things going on at the EDC. We have, we can call any one of our committees to a council meeting to provide information to the general public. So I think that, again, it's a first step. It's the first of hopefully many steps.
Thank you for the support. In some of my prior statements on this item here in council, I concur. I've thought about the Albion Community Foundation, the Chamber of Commerce coming in in incremental steps, the business district coming in, and the entrepreneurs. As you all know, I'm very big with the Michigan Municipal League, and as I continue to network with them and read their material, I'm seeing around the nation where this type of planning is tangibly working. You can put your hand on it. You can go to these cities, even with the bone. On our last review, completely around the nation, cities are rebuilding their cities around an initiative like that. That's not the end-all, to be-all, but we need to start. Thank you.
I don't think there's a question nobody supports it. It's just that, you know, who's gonna organize it and put it together and come up with an agenda?
You'd have to have a meeting before the meeting to.
Exactly.
No, I think. I'm saying figuratively.
You know.
I think, I think, my thought would be that we would have Cheryl contact the superintendent, who would then contact the school board. We'd have him contact Maury Ditzler, the president, get the vice presidents together, and say, hey, we're gonna have a meeting at the Ishman House, or here in the city hall, or someplace, to come and meet and have an informal conversation and discussion. And we just see where it goes from there. Ideas will filter up if we, if we allow them to filter up. And we just, that's, I think that's the way to start it. And there doesn't have to be an agenda other than we want to talk about issues that face the city, in a very broad and general way, and let's see what happens.
I agree. That's why I say, so for approval for that, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say the same? So, you know, we approve the collaboration. Yes. Cheryl?
Can we wait until after the first of the year to do this?
Yes, please.
Gonna have to.
I'm starting to get really top-heavy on the nights I have open.
Oh, I'm sure it'll take all of that just to get it put together, for everybody to get on the same sheet of music, so.
Okay.
Okay. C. Request for approval for the SEMCO Environmental Contamination Containment Agreement. So moved.
Support.
Support.
Who's gonna take that, on what level?
Well, is there a representative from the county here on this topic? There, I wasn't sure if they were going to be here. But basically, this is in regards to the ongoing situation relative to the SEMCO property. And you have two actions before you today. The first one is in regards to the agreement relative to the, essentially, the abatement on the right-of-way area. And there was a sharing in terms of the cost, and they are agreeing to pay the $7,000 of those costs relative to when they placed the valve.
The valve placement, yeah. Okay.
I was, yes. I called Greg Bretman from the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality pursuant to our meeting. And I just want the public to know that I'm supporting this because of the information that he gave me concerning this event. They've been working at that site for 10 years. It used to be a manufacturing gas plant there, and they were driving gas out of the coal. And he did say it was detrimental to health, as far as the soil and the groundwater. What they specifically took out was tar in the river, and they found lots of compounds. And they found the source material, and it was the source of the contaminants. He said they investigated it, they did soil samples, they did impacts. The analyzation found that source. They stopped digging because of the water table. Said it was danger to keep it open. And the excavation did become hazardous, and it was costing a lot of money. Some of the stuff was left behind. So I asked him, how can people be exposed? He said groundwater by drinking it, if you eat the dirt, or some contact. But they did make measures to prevent this from happening. Eliminate the wells, that would be illegal, to have drinking wells there. And we can always temporary de-water for construction. I was asking him about when we get a broken water main. He said that we need to, we can, they'll be monitoring the wells and the water mains. There are warnings in place when they need to be serviced. So I didn't receive any negative impact from our department head, so therefore I'm supporting it.
And I did want to mention that both agreements were reviewed extensively by both Carl and Colin Harkness, as well as our environmental attorney.
My final statement was, Mrs. Branch invited me over to her house one Saturday to examineate the site, and she did some investigation on her own. And if she has anything any different than I have, I would like you to let us know, please. Thank you.
Any other third? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wheaton.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes.
D. Request approval of SEMCO Road Right-of-Way Alternative Institutional Control.
So moved.
Support.
Been moved and supported.
So this is the, this is the road?
Eaton Street. Where they had to help pay...